I call to order the regular planning commission meeting for the month of February. Can we please have a roll call?
Good evening, Chair Kerpyat. Commissioner Slaymaker.
Here.
Commissioner Burke.
Here.
Commissioner Seidel. Commissioner Hart. Chair Kerpyat.
Here.
Thank you.
And I'd like to proceed to the open forum. Is there anyone here who was used to speak on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Please come to the podium and state your name. Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing none. We'll move on to item C, reports. Does any planning commissioner have any reports to give from any standing subcommittees? Seeing none, does the staff have any reports?
No.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that the planning commission considers to be non-controversial. Unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the planning commission's staff or audience, the consent calendar will be adopted in one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence as they appear below. If any member of the audience wishes to have an item removed, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you to come to the podium. If you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand in the lower portion of the Zoom platform and indicate what item you want to remove from the consent calendar. And after removing the item, the planning commission will call for comment at the appropriate time. The consent calendar consists of the draft minutes of January 17th, 2024, and consideration of historic designation for the property of 250 Beach. Does any commissioner wish to remove any item from the consent calendar? We have a question.
In terms of approval of historic designation, I thought there was a pause. Was that a pause at City Council?
No, that's a pause for the Mills Act where they get to freeze their taxes.
Yeah, different.
But they can be still considered historic, but they wouldn't be able to get that until the city revises that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, seeing no one. Anyone in the audience wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom? None. May I have a motion for the consent calendar, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Open up the public hearings. The first is item number three, 455 Belvedere Avenue. May we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Kerpyat. And members of the planning commission, for your consideration this evening is an application for design review, demolition, variance, and revocable license for a new single-family residence and attached garage at 455 Belvedere Avenue. The project proposes to demolish the existing residence and construct a 4,845 square foot, three-level residence. The garage would be set back 25 feet from Belvedere Avenue, 10 feet from both side yards, and over 60 feet from the rear property line. Upon feedback at the January planning commission meeting, the applicant proposes various changes. The area shaded in red represents the previous design. The project would now push both pavilions four feet to the north. The total floor area would be reduced to 4,845 square feet. The courtyard's depth would be reduced eight and a half inches. The roof overhang on the southwest side of the lower pavilion would be pushed five feet towards the center of the home. The bedroom terrace would be reduced 67 square feet. One coastal live oak previously proposed for removal would be preserved. And the ball bow on Blanding Lane would now be removed. Net off-haul would be increased from the previous 149 cubic yards to 261 cubic yards of soil. Here, the top image shows what the overhang will look like when reduced five feet on the southwest corner of the site. Exterior lighting changes also include removing the LED strip lights previously located at the garage and courtyard entry. Steplights would also be relocated to the stair walls rather than at the risers. The updated design reduces the roof overhang height from 48 to 42 feet, and the building wall would be reduced from 43 feet to 37 feet and 10 inches tall. As a result, the project requires a variance to exceed the 36-foot height limitation within the R15 zoning district. The project would be exempt from CEQA. And while staff can't support many of the design review findings, we recommend the planning commission consider the site and project design to determine whether any special circumstances pertain that would prevent the applicant from constructing a residence comparable to others in the vicinity without a variance. Should the commission be able to approve the variance, staff has included a draft resolution in your packets. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? I just have one, Sammy. I'm sorry. I guess I was seeing something and now I'm reading something and it's might just be a mistake. So in the background, it says they're building a 5,035 square foot residence, but in the zoning chart, they show they're building 4,845 square feet. Is that 5,000 just in air or left over from last time?
That's right.
That's all.
One more question. Can you just quantify the amount of the height variance that they're asking for?
It's for one feet and 10 inches.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please? At the base, push the button.
Got it. And I'm, I think I got the microphone. I might need some help with the sharing. Thank you. All right. Thank you for your patience here. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Federico Engel. I'm with Butler Armsden Architects. Thank you Rebecca and Sammy for all your work on the project as well as the staff report. Thank you commissioners again for your time this evening and for braving this unpredictable weather to make it to the site this last weekend. Through this design review process, we've received and gathered quite a bit of information, learned quite a bit about the site, and have been able to synthesize all this into the proposal that you see before you tonight. And I look forward to sending that to you this evening. Before getting to the list of changes and design improvements, which is, by the way, a little spoiler, very similar to Sammy's list, I wanted to note the key design concepts that are still very much relevant in the design. First is maximizing the views of the bay from this amazing property and preserving as many of the live oaks as possible on the west property line. Second, keeping the overall design concept of the two pavilions that are connected with a level ADA-type entry and separated by the courtyard. The courtyard did shrink a little bit like Sammy mentioned, but still remains a very usable space that is protected from the wind and maybe could have come in handy this weekend as well. Third is improving the visual and spatial condition at the intersection of Belvedere Avenue and Blanding by removing the existing structure and citing the new garage and the ADU 25 feet back from this intersection. And fourth, citing the second pavilion, the main home, within the widest part of the property, allowing us to maximize the views from the house and also maximizing the privacy to adjacent neighbors. Can look through. I'm just going to move through these quickly. Not that quickly. This is a very similar exhibit that Sammy had on his screen. And if you don't mind, I'll just kind of quickly list some of the changes and improvements, very similar to Sammy. As he noted, number one, the way I like to think of this kind of most significant shift is where we moved the rear facade. Total amount of six foot, six inches, we put approximately six feet up there. But we moved that back facade six feet, six inches away from the bluff towards the front of the property. And this has a number of improvements for the overall design and feel of the project. Number one, we drastically reduce the overall height of the building by nestling it further into the hillside. As Sammy mentioned, we almost completely eliminate the variance request. Again, we're at at one foot 10 currently, and we'll show a graphic showing how small that little area is. And number three, kind of by pushing this six feet back, we kind of, we really improve the views, which are not protected, but the views from both adjacent structures kind of diagonally through our property. Number two, on the bullet point there is reducing the height. Oops, sorry, excuse me. Increasing the side setback on the east side from the prescribed 10 feet. We were at 10 foot four last time. We're now at a total of 14 foot, four inches, again on the east side next to Fort Blanding. Number three is reducing the roof and setback at that height condition on the southwest corner. Number four, reducing the terrace depth to conform to the existing grade. This also has to do, again, we just kind of, this wasn't a comment from last time, but we felt like the lower terrace could use some design improvement, so we went ahead and took some liberties there. Number five, reducing the revocable license area by 85 square feet. Number six is adding additional landscaping on the pool patio, again, kind of softening that corner condition. And number seven is where we are preserving one additional tree. Two more quick items that aren't on this map, but there is a reduction and modification to the exterior lighting, hopefully taking into account some of the comments from last time, as well as, most importantly, reducing the overall square footage below the 48, 4,850 square foot threshold. So we're no longer requesting a variance or exemption for that. And I'm just going to flip through. These are just graphic representations to some of those points. And I'll just flip through them quickly. This is an overlay of the proposed home in blue with the two pavilions compared to the existing structure that's there now, right on the corner of Blanding and Belvedere Avenue. And then the green, just we thought it was interesting. This is the representation of what was demolished in 2017 as well. So you can see the footprint of that structure was was quite significant, too. This is an illustrative site plan. There's a lot I like about this, but one thing for me, it really kind of brings into clarity kind of that setback of the garage and the improvement of the intersection between Blanding and Belvedere Avenue. This is kind of, again, a comparative rendering with the current structure there as well as what was there before in 2017. As you could see, the new garage and ADU is actually lower than the existing structure by quite a bit. And what's hard to see here, it's actually setback, you know, the 25 feet from that intersection. This is, we talked quite a bit about the view corridor from Blanding last time. And again, giving a little bit, something back to the public, which has enjoyed this beautiful view for the last five, six years. The bottom rendering is what we presented last time here, and as you could see, the the top rendering, just by a subtle shift of four, six feet, you can see that the view has opened up quite a bit. This is a different way of looking at it, but it emphasizes how the architecture and design is, I think, kind of picture framing, almost focusing that view on the bridge. This is the rendering, kind of a bird's eye view rendering, again, a lot to point out here, but a couple of notes. You can see kind of the shift in the space that is opened up between Fort Blanding and our project. You know, the the overall color tone is intended to be, you know, quite neutral and blend into the landscape, although we do have kind of these, you know, what we think are are kind of architectural horizontal elements with the eaves. And then a little bit of landscaping, kind of in that pool patio to soften the corner. Oops, sorry, went too fast there. See if I could go back. Seems to be skipping number 10. And try one more time. There we go. I think this is probably the best graphic depiction of the height variance. As you can see, we've moved that facade back. We've reduced the height variance request by almost six feet. We have this tiny, tiny little corner that's still sticking out beyond the 36-foot height plane, grade plane. And, you know, I think the the design right now justifies it. And again, we have this kind of existing grade condition where we have, you know, a swale and a drainage basin kind of right in that area. So we are still kind of of the mind that some, you know, some grading work previously has kind of you know, cost this condition as well. And we're almost done here. This is a graphic representation of just the south facade. It was noted that there is certainly quite a bit of glass on that south facade that we really wanted to celebrate and maximize the view. We do have the deep overhangs for protection against the southern exposure. But we we did add and kind of play around with these operable wood louvers that can be configured in different ways and used either individually or collectively. And you could see that they do have the the possibility of reducing the glazing by over 35%. And then we have, we do have motorized shades inside, which would also kind of give different visibility between between glass types as well. And then these are just two neighbor conditions. This is the view from 445 Armand. If I could speak briefly, we spoke just a minute ago before the hearing started, and you seem satisfied with the with the story pole conditions, so I don't have to speak too much about this. And then last slide, I promise. This is the view from the beautiful Julia Morgan home uphill, which is actually 450 Belvedere. Great neighbor as well. He was concerned about just some of that view impact. These are, if I zoom in, you can see the story poles in there. And then the orange is kind of the reduction, an estimated reduction with that six-foot setback that we've been speaking about. And I know there was an email from, I believe, the neighbor next door to the east. Haven't met him. I kind of assume it's a similar view from up there, just given the height of the two structures. And in my humble opinion, I don't think the the view impact is too significant. And I think that is it for me. Thank you very much. And I'm certainly available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Nana?
Yes, I forgot to.
Nana, bring it close to your mouth.
I forgot to ask when we met regarding the the size of the roof of the JDU under the pathway from the garage area to the main, main building or the main structure. On one side, on the north side, you have four bonsai drawn in there.
Yes.
And I was just wondering, is that a whole independent kind of a green roof, or is it just that exactly? Was it just that section there that you're going to have as a green roof?
We are most likely going to do a decorative stone roof and then pots with the actual column bonsai or kind of small plants.
Okay, so it's not a green roof underneath or?
Not green, per se.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kevin?
One, I just want to underscore this for myself and everyone else and people who are listening. If you go back to 10.
Yes, absolutely.
It's the volume of variance, I think, is really important to underscore, because this wasn't clear to me until I met with Jason on site. And so that little corner that you have drawn here. So on the left, I think that's that's the volume of the house that will be considered, you know, over the 36 feet. So it's that little piece, which I think you told me, Jason, was 0.02% of the house is what we're talking about. Okay, great. I just thought that was worth underscoring. And then I had a question about, minor questions about lighting, which I was just curious, the directional lighting, there's recessed lighting, I think it's E2, or I can't remember the number for it, to be honest, but indicated on the plan. And I was wondering, what is the purpose of having directional recessed lighting? And I think it's E4.
Commissioner Burke, just on the kind of the eaves and the overhang.
Yeah.
I think there there's certainly a valid point to reducing the amount of light. I think that the intent is just to kind of illuminate the the exterior. Other than that, we don't have a huge amount of lights on the pool patio or in the courtyard itself. I know we have some some lights in the pool, but not so many on the patio itself. So I think that kind of captures most of that lighting and architecturally, it just kind of, you know, it just blurs that interior-exterior division. So we'll have kind of a similar interior resist lighting package and just having that continuity from the inside to the outside just kind of makes the space feel bigger.
That makes sense, but my question is more specifically about the use of directional recessed lighting versus just recessed lighting. I mean, we typically see just standard recessed lighting. So directional, for what purpose? Like directing towards?
It gives us just a little bit of flexibility. Usually, the angle that we look at is about 30 degrees. So we're not, you know, we're not suddenly shining it too far, but it just gives us a little bit of architectural design flexibility if we want to highlight a plant or a pot or, you know, a chaise lounge or a table.
Got it. And I think that was it.
So I have one quick question, and I'm not sure it's that you'll be able to answer or not, but I was worried about with all the off-haul being larger now and it being 261 cubic yards. If I add it up, right, that's 52 of your trucks. So I was wondering if there was some set schedule on how this was going to happen, because I know it's supposedly going to be, you know, two weeks. It'll be all at the most. So how do you make that work where that many trucks can go up and down Belvedere Avenue?
You are right. This is, I think, a little bit above my pay grade on this one.
Sorry, but I worry about that going, you know.
From what I remember, I'm not sure Rebecca or Sammy, you guys have, but there is during the building permit process, there's a pre-construction meeting with the building officials. We actually film the roadway, the access. And I think they come up with kind of a game plan on how to approach that.
That's correct. Even prior to that, that specific meeting, we require parking staging, off-haul routes filmed so that we can work with their team on road conditions, how many truckloads, when they're going to be happening, if there's a lot of projects in that area. We talk about off-haul routes and when, you know, maybe we say, well, we've got a large project going on now. Can you wait one week until you pull your permit? So we're very involved with sort of when we issue that building permit and how it's done in terms of off-haul routes.
Have the barge been approached?
That's something we haven't explored yet with this project, but.
I think it would be too hard with the location.
I think it's probably really steep.
Yeah, just to get, yeah. Isn't that two weeks? Isn't that just for demo?
Typically, yeah.
Because I think a lot of that off-haul is going to come when they do the retaining walls and foundations. Is that not correct?
Correct, yeah. Mostly excavation for for the kind of the platform.
I would guess the demo would be shorter just on that garage.
Yeah, I don't think it'll take two weeks.
Yeah, so I bet that's shorter, and then the off-haul is probably.
It's probably going to be scattered, I would think, for stability. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Yeah.
I wasn't at the last meeting, but the question that was raised about glazing, I think Commissioner Johnson may have raised it, and then you were talking about the operable louvers as a solution, but my understanding that those were included in the plan that was submitted at the last meeting.
No.
Actually, that's what I told today, but.
Jason, can I put you on this? Were they included? And it, I think the, I'm sorry, Jason, I'm going to say what I know first, which the exhibit is new. I think we had never looked at it in terms of the, you know, the percentage of of glazing that it would cover up.
Got it.
So that's what we were trying to present for Jason.
Yeah. That design element was included within the original submittal, but we didn't, again, to kind of echo what Fed said, if the exhibit wasn't produced to, I guess, quantify the amount of glazing that could be screened versus.
Right. And so I would just defer this back to the other commissioners who were here. I don't know if that addresses the issue that was raised. I would just question whether or not, if it was included in the original submittal, then does it, you know, address the issue that was raised in the last meeting? And two, if they're operable, I mean, in all likelihood, they're going to be pushed to the side. I mean, then, I mean, most likely, they'll never be used, or at least that would be my worry, and that wouldn't necessarily address whatever the concern was. But again, I wasn't in that meeting.
So well, I don't have the plans from last time to compare it to, but I don't remember seeing that kind of screening. So you might have had it, but it wasn't a point that was driven home that they would be there. I mean, it's kind of like, you know, Nine West Shorten. And I think the other thing is, is that when we look at glazing, especially on the lagoon, which this is not, we have neighbors directly across the way. And this house has neighbors that are way, way, way away that are not. I mean, they might see the light, but they're not going to be directly affected by it. So I think the location also contributes, mitigates that that it's not really going to be, because even on the side, they have a lot of, they don't have as much glass on the side for, I'm sure, both privacy and everything else. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was something Commissioner Slaymaker checked on is is that I know we are struggling with this project for the height and the suggestion to pull it back. And in that suggestion, we increased the off hall by a hundred and I had it here a minute ago. Sixty one square, two sixty?
I think from approximately one fifty to two sixty one.
Yeah, okay. So we we're increasing it quite a bit. And so part of our code is 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 going with the slope of the land. And so we struggle with this. We don't want to have super large projects with cut and fill. But then we're also struggling with a variance for the height. And so I think the commission, you know, is trying to balance what's the best for the community and of course, the applicant to have, you know, the house they want. And so but these suggestions that the architect abided by has really increased the off hall and is really going to increase the amount of impact to the neighbors in that area. So I just wanted to bring that up, that this is a conundrum that we face. But we should be aware when we say push it back into the hillside, what we're asking folks to do. So just as a point of reference. So thank you, Alex. Did you have anything questions? Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Commissioners.
I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the project? Seeing none? Anyone on Zoom? Nancy? Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Hart, could you lead us off?
Yes. Visited the site again this weekend and went through every point that we raised at the last meeting. And I think the applicant very thoroughly listened and acted. And I must say, I'm I'm very impressed that nearly every point that we raised has been addressed, in my view, positively. And I did not understand last meeting that these panels, and I looked, I have the old drawings and they are in there. But I don't think any of us asked, do they move? Which now they showed on on these different renderings and so on. Yes, they can be moved. And I think as far as as I have more or less the same exposure, I know that they will probably be used to keep the heat out more than the light at night. So maybe the light pollution is going to be there. Are there neighbors that can see the see it? I doubt it, except passing boats because of where it's located and the angle towards the city and the Golden Gate. And I'm I'm usually very objecting to these huge solid glass walls. But I think here with the panels, I think I can I can understand the design and even approve it as presented with those louvers. There are a few lights that I would like to see kind of removed on the main deck in front of the living space. I think they are slightly excessive and also a few in front of the garage. But I know also that will and and will be addressed and finalized with the chair and planning at the point of of the building permit. So I I have to say that I can, at this point, with a little sliver of one foot, one inch of variance in height, that I can make all the findings for this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Slaymaker?
Yes. I also read the staff report and talked to property with the manager. And I wasn't the first planning commission review, but I did read all the issues and so I appreciate all the changes that were made for the project in respect to the commissioners and the neighbors. Reduction of outside front facing garage. From other than other, I I think it really brings up and the removal of the whole house, I think, blending with the avenue will give a much better finish to the front of the house. I certainly appreciate the way that the whole design was placed on the property because I know it's an unusual setup and they were able to do a great job setting it down. And I also think the rent state plan will give property to the property and the neighbors on the side. I did have, the only question was if a little bit of a lighting change is which I installed.
And the variance? Thank you. Commissioner Seidel?
Thank you. I did visit the site again. It must have been the absolute worst moment. You have some pretty damn sturdy story poles. Commend you on that. But I I also want to commend you on the thoroughness of your representation of this to us. Clearly, you've listened to the commission. And as an architect myself, I'm aware of how much time it takes to to create those exhibits. So thank you for that. I am in support of this application. I think that the one foot, ten inch variance, I'll be able to find in favor of that. I think this is a good example of taking a very nice project and making it even better. It's really going to nestle, I think, into the site in a very beautiful way. So I will be able to make the findings in favor of this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke?
Thank you. I would echo many of the comments that have already been shared in terms of, I think, it's a beautiful site and it's a beautiful project and plan that you have in place. And I also really admire the work that you've done to respond to the commissioner's comments. I viewed the last meeting on video and, you know, I met with Jason today on site. And you guys have been incredibly responsive to the comments and it's reflected in the plan. And I agree with Alex that it's, in my opinion, a better plan based on that. So I can make the findings from a design review standpoint. I would also like Commissioner Hart just ask you to look at some of the recessed lighting, the directional lighting, and see if there's a way to just pair that back on the front and the back, if possible. Well, of course, providing appropriate lighting for the applicant. And then in terms of the variance, I think there's two things I wanted to say. One, there's the philosophy of granting variances, which I think as a city, we've potentially been too, not potentially. I think we've been too lenient in the past. And I think, you know, my philosophy is to only grant them as a last resort. And if an applicant can really show that there's a hardship that needs to be overcome through that variance. That said, I also think there's a practicality of this particular project that we need to look at. And that's why I asked you to underscore, we're talking about a little piece of overhang. So in the context of that, I certainly can make the finding and support the variance. But again, as a philosophy, I think we should be much more strict about them going forward.
Thank you. And to not delay, I agree with everything my commissioners have said. You've done an excellent job listening to the commission coming back, giving us what we asked for. The lighting will work on. And it's a beautiful project. I liked the original project. But I think that this solves a little bit of some of the concerns neighbors had in general. So and I think you have kept the 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 intention of the design by making those small little changes. And I can also make all the findings, including the variance for height, because I do think this property has an unusual circumstance in that it at that corner, that little teeny tiny corner, as Commissioner Burke described it, that that portion of the lot just sort of drops away. And I think that is unusual in that it's not a love a lot, but rather it's a lot that has a big cliff and drops off quite rapidly. So I could make for all of the motions. So can I have the motions, including the variance for height?
I move that we adopt the resolution granting design review for a new single family residence and attached garage at four fifty five Belvedere Avenue.
We vote first, each one we vote on.
Okay.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye as well. I I move that we adopt the resolution granting demolition permit to demolish the existing one thousand eleven square foot residence at four fifty five Belvedere Avenue.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
I move that we recommend to the city council approval of a revocable license for improvements located in the public street right of way at four fifty five Belvedere Avenue.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And then I also move that we, a resolution of the city of Belvedere granting a variance from section nineteen point twenty six point zero four zero to allow our structure to exceed the height limitation in the R dash fifteen zoning district for the property located at four fifty five Belvedere Avenue be approved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Congratulations. Hey, moving on to the next item, number four, six Buckeye, Nana?
Yes, I I am recused from this next item. But I have something I would like to ask staff because I think it's interesting, not maybe just for me, but for the public, that even if I am recused from this, I read it and I looked through it and I saw that this applicant is asking for a retroactive review. And in that retroactive review, they have also a it's a they ask for, let me see here, yeah, the estimate of time from construction, which is a document in here. And in it, it says that that estimate is twenty five thousand dollars. With that twenty five dollars, they it says that they are then, the applicant then is allowed a twelve month construction.
Excuse me, Chair. Just as a point of order, Commissioner Hart, I apologize for interrupting, but I believe you are recused from this item.
Yeah, but it's just a point of.
Nana? Can you state why you're recused?
I have property within five hundred feet.
Yeah, and so given the existence of that conflict, I would ask that you not participate in any discussion of items whatsoever.
So I can't ask.
But thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
May we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Kerpiet and members of the planning commission for your consideration this evening as an application for design review and exception to total floor area for a residential addition and parking upgrades at six Buckeye Road. The applicant requests design review to make improvements to a project currently under construction. In two thousand twenty two, the applicant received planning commission approval to add one thousand four hundred and forty six square feet to the existing residence. And two thousand twenty two later, prior to receiving a building permit, the project's structural engineer determined that a one hundred and twenty square foot area of crawl space required further structural support, including a full height concrete wall and that slab foundation to connect the ground floor and first floor. The applicant was issued a building permit and began construction. Realizing the floor area was inconsistent with the approved plans, the applicant submitted a new design review application and is asking for a retroactive approval for the conditioned floor area. In addition to the additional, in addition to the floor area, the applicant seeks further changes for design review approval, including two new uncovered parking spaces on the right side of the front yard, two thirty four inch by twenty two inch thick skylights, and a new four foot tall stained wood fence at the entry gate and at the front of the residence. Outline here in red. The project also proposes eleven pittosporum to eight feet tall at the front yard and various grasses in the front and rear yards, including coyote bush, California fescue and deer grass. Exterior lighting would include LED steplights along the front, left side and rear yard, as noted here in green, six inch tall path lights at the steps and rear terraces, as noted in orange, and outdoor wall sconces at the garage and basement level noted in blue. The hundred and twenty square foot crawl space conversion would result in a total of five thousand four hundred and sixty five square feet of floor area on a site where four thousand three hundred and two square feet is permitted, thus requiring an exception to total floor area. In order to grant the exception, the planning commission must make the following findings. And as outlined in the draft resolutions, staff recommends that the findings for the exception can be made. The project will be exempt from CEQA. And as detailed in the resolution, staff finds the addition to comply with the zoning ordinance and general plan policies and recommends planning commission adopt the resolution, granting design review. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. I wish you would do all the lighting plans how you just presented it tonight because it made it so easy to read color coordinated. Thank you. Actually, the applicant, I wish all the applicants would do it that way. Are there any questions for staff? I have a question. This is retroactive, so they don't get additional time on a retroactive permit, do they? If they're all under the original permit?
That's correct, yeah. They would follow the original.
In this case, I just looked, they have an eighteen month C T L right now. So that's the maximum any project would get. I think generally, if a retroactive permit came in and it increased the value of a project significantly and they did not have the full eighteen months, they could possibly get.
An additional six months or whatever. They wouldn't get the twelve months. Okay. And then I had one other question. I was looking at the municipal code. And nineteen point fifty two point one two oh two small B says that a project that is a continuation, an expansion or a phase of a project for which one or more variances were granted within a two year, within two years prior is disfavored. I was trying to think of the word they used.
Can you repeat that section of the code, please?
Nineteen point fifty two point. 19.52.120.2. B.
Yeah, that, so was there a variance with this project in the beginning?
For floor area?
Well, floor area is an exception to total floor area, not a variance.
Oh, okay.
So it's two separate processes, right? I don't think this project had a variance. It's had an exception to total floor area. It's asking for another exception.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. Can we please hear from the applicant?
I might need a little assistance here. That's, that's yours. Thanks, Sammy. Good evening, Commissioners, thank you to the planning staff and to Commissioners. There we go. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Cedric Barron. I'm the architect for 6 Buckeye Road. I wanted to, I guess, clarify a little bit the question on the C T L. We're, we're at a, I think, February 23rd. So we're at about a 12 months of our 18 month C T L. So there, there'll be, there'll be no impact on, on the C T L as part of this project. So here, the 6 Buckeye Road is private, private road. The property line is the center line of the road, which is somewhat unusual. This is a picture of the, the house before the project. You'll see this, there's some, I think this is a rock rose. The, the fence that was removed during construction for access is on either side of the driveway. And then this gate was also removed. So the components of, of this presentation, the, the two front yard areas are similar, kind of one in the same. There's, there were two, two parking spaces that were, for all intensive purposes, used. But we're, we're pulling the fence back further to, to fully get them off of the, off of the right of way. And then the front fence and entry gate are elements that we're just essentially replacing in kind. Then the addition of the two skylights on the, the office at the, you know, the home's entry. And then the floor area exception was mentioned by Sammy, which is in the basement. I'll, I'll kind of go through these in, in order of what I was going to perceive as the easiest to, easiest to explain. So as, as I mentioned, this was prior to construction. These, I think before we had building permit, they did some cleanup. And you can see this was, this was the before condition where a car was about four feet onto, onto the, the paving. As part of the approved construction management plan, the contractor built a temporary steel lagging wall, which was about eight feet back from here to allow for what amounted to about five off-street construction spaces, which was extremely useful for everybody during construction. For those of you that went to the site, we're just about finished. So this is a zoom in of, of the site plan. I, I should also note that the, the, the lighting, the, the only lighting that is part of this application are the, are the four step lights that are in this fence. Everything else was previously approved. But regardless, so this is where we're replacing the fence in kind. This is where this kind of borders the driveway. And then this is the portion here where my cursor is that the fence is, is moving. Previous fence location showed in, in red. So you can see that we're, we're essentially just, just allowing these cars to be fully off the pavement. This, this, this hatch line here shows the, the existing pavement. So that, that steel lagging wall is shown in pink. What we're hoping to do is just cut, cut off about a foot of that wall to allow for a planter here. And then the fence will be about three feet back from that wall. So the, the, there'll be enough space for the pittusporum to grow here. Everything else in the site plan in this location is really just an adjustment of, of what was there previously to accommodate for this new parking. This is the section, so there's a lower, a lower site wall, which is existing. This shows the, the previous grade and the previous fence location. So we're really just, so currently this, this wall is at the level of the paving. So we're just taking a foot off of that and then we'll have a fence that, from the street will be four feet and then down to this grade will be five feet. So really just creating more space for, for off-street parking, which is useful for everyone. But these get skewed. But essentially, this is, this is just the landscape plan. I apologize. I don't know why I, I got rotated. But in any case, this is, as Sammy pointed out, this is a row of pittusporum and then some, I think some, some deer grass or kind of monolithic tone that, that'll be down, down at the, at the bottom. This is the previous fence where really replacing it in kind. The only difference is that it's going to be two leaves opening out versus one because it was about 42 inches wide and a little cumbersome, but really just cleaning, cleaning up that fence. This, again, this is prior to construction, but it shows well, at, this is the entrance door about here where my cursor is. Let's see even that. This, this got infilled, this front deck got infilled as part of the previous approval as an office. And as north is left in this image, we are requesting two skylights here. Owners have talked to neighbors and there was, there was no, no concern from neighbors. So here's, I apologize about these, these getting rotated somehow. But this person doesn't show the skylights. Somewhat, somewhat not useful, but the skylights, as you, as you come down to the, the front step, the skylights are, as I showed on that, on that image. And if this hadn't gotten rotated, they'd be, they'd be right here above that, above that office. So the, the last, it's really unfortunate that these got rotated. So the last element of, of the, of this presentation is, is really the floor area exemption. Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to figure, you guys have the plans. It's, yeah, perhaps because it's, my, my, my hatches are kind of all in the wrong spot now. But it is, I think it's important to note that really the, the, the only, the only portion of this floor area exception, everything else was approved at 120 square feet, less than 1404. And through the process will, which I'll explain, there was an additional 120 square feet. So maybe, maybe we could just go down to the lower, the basement plan, so 82.0. One up, so slide six. So, so what happened, so that area that's hatched there is, is the area in question. The previous approval, the, the, the first approval, that office and gym and bathroom and a hallway were pulled back to that grid line four. Grid line four, as it turns out, is a pivotal part of the structure. It's, it's kind of a split level home and that's, that's where the, the structure shifts from, from all, all these half levels. So we, we got a design review exemption as we were working towards building permit and pulled that, it's roughly 500 square feet. We pulled those forward because the client wanted to, they were concerned about the, there's a, a deck overhanging those exterior spaces. They just wanted to reduce that overhang. The, the structural design was not 100% complete at that point. The, so as we worked towards building permit with that space now pulled forward, my intention had, had been that that was going to remain, it was going to reduce the excavation and it was going to just essentially the, the, the concrete wall would have moved forward with, with the spaces. In reality, it's a 12 inch thick mat slab that is connected with that kind of pivotal grid line four. And I, I noticed the discrepancy when they were forming for concrete excavation had already happened. I made an appointment to go talk with Sammy about what, what our, what our options were. And he, he rightly kind of guided me that, you know, this is a, a situation where, because it's over the floor ratio that I would have to, we'd have to go through a floor area exception a second time. We figured we would, we, we knew there were going to be some, some site areas and some other elements. So that's why we're kind of combining this into one, one area or one presentation tonight. So really, the, the, the structural plan that was approved, we, we built everything to the approved plan. Our intention was that this would just remain a closed off space until we started talking with Brian Densong and the, the fire sprinkler subs that said, well, you, you, per building code, you have to sprinkle it and you have to provide access to mechanical air things that are happening above that. So here in line, the, the conundrum, we, we, we have to provide access to that space. So we figured we would make an attempt for the floor, the further floor exception and, and be able to use that space. If, if not, if the solution is to, to simply do a 32 inch by 24 inch hatch and to make it accessible and meet the code, that would be, that would be fine with us. But I think it's, I think it's important to note that we, we were, we didn't, we were following the approved plans the whole time. The contractor didn't change something that was not in the approved plans. I feel like it's, it's a, the, the findings can, can all be made as far as privacy and mass and bulk and all this stuff because it is literally underneath the house and has no effect on, on any of those items. So I think in addition, because it's already built, there's no additional timeline involved or anything along those lines. So I hope, I'd be happy to answer any questions and I hope you can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Kevin?
I had a question, and I'm sorry, I didn't realize this until you actually mentioned it, is that the lot line goes to the middle of the street? And maybe this might be a question back to staff. Is there any easement for that street in terms of what needs to be reserved for the street versus what? I mean, I know different private streets are, have dealt with this issue in different ways.
I would speculate it's a roadway easement, but maybe Sammy knows.
Because if there's a roadway easement, then wouldn't we need to take that into account as we contemplate the additional parking? Because that may encroach on the roadway easement, if there is one.
Well, the easement usually is the pavement.
Right, so I don't think the parking would impact the easement.
The parking is on the other side of the pavement, so they're not changing the road. No.
Do you want to answer? The, in, in the site plan there that had up before, 1.1, it's the fourth slide, I believe. The, the, that hatch where the two cars are, that's the existing pavement. So, so we're, 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 I feel like we're improving the situation. My understanding is that, I mean, it's a, as long as we maintain, I believe it's 15 feet of, of pavement, clear pavement for fire truck access, that that's, that's the, the regulation. So I, I, I feel that, and, and the clients have, have realized in, in the process of kind of enjoying this deeper parking that we're, if anything, we're taking cars further off the road than they were previously.
But I think we need to understand from the center of the road, what is considered, whether it's paved or not, I think we need to understand what is considered the roadway and whether or not there's an easement that protects that.
So there is, if you can see where my cursor is, there's a 30 foot public service and road easement. So it goes 15 feet this way and 15 feet into that parking. I don't have the language of that easement and so I don't know if it says, you know, you can't have anything in the easement.
Based on what you just said, that technically these parked cars are in the roadway easement right now, as they're indicated.
Correct.
I mean, without, without knowing what the legal language is, I think we, I don't think we could approve or not approve it without understanding that.
I can tell you, I, I shared this with our city engineer and he, he had comments and he was fine with the, the two spots, the two parking spaces.
Yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't help us. I mean, an easement is an easement and there's something, if something's been filed. I mean, so the same issue is on Euclid's where there's an easement that's been filed, which we really didn't discover until after the fact. And I think we should just be careful not to end up in the same situation here. I mean, this could be perfectly fine. I just think it clearly says there's a 15 foot from the center of the road on either side. These cars are parked or indicated to be parked within that space. So I think we just need to read the easement to make sure we understand what is a lot and what is not, I think.
Okay, did you have any other questions?
No. Well, I was going to ask a question about the pittusporum, but it seems silly now.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Alex.
I actually had a similar, I guess, question as Commissioner Burke did. The, I wonder if, is this to staff, did you happen to run this by fire? Because fire trucks have to get through there. It, it's a private street, but presumably they would still drive in. And I was just wondering if fire had a chance to review this.
They may not have. I can, I'll double check.
But they, well, there is more than 15 feet, which is more than what they require on other projects. Right? I think they have a 10. Right? I think they have a ten or twelve foot minimum, and you can see on this diagram, there's fifteen feet from here to here, plus whatever that dimension is.
Okay, and so.
I hate to speak for fire.
No, that's that's helpful, because I'm I'm used to twenty feet being the minimum, but I think Belvedere is kind of a special circumstance. So if they're okay with fifteen, then that probably answers my question.
But again, I think it's it's also situational, because they have to be able to look at the street and understand how they can get a truck in, but then how can they get a truck out? And what's unique about Buckeye is there's kind of a chokehold at the end of the street. So if you head out, I mean, I don't know how you would get a fire truck out. I guess they'd have to back out. Yeah. In any event, I think it's we should technically have them look at, put their eyes on the plan and approve it versus, I think. But the easement thing is my first issue, but I think you raise another issue. I think the fire should look at it as well. I mean, I was there today. I mean, it's a very, very tight street, and we should just make sure we're not making a a difficult situation even more difficult.
Can I just make a quick comment that to issue the the building permit, obviously, the fire does does take it, and we have the we had to sprinkle the whole building. So like fire has been involved with the the previous building permit, for sure.
But not with this new parking.
No, correct.
Yeah, that's the issue.
So I have a question. We have the space with the big retaining wall. That's, I don't know, closet, whatever. And I unfortunately had approved that design review exception, and I pulled up the plans from then and the plans from the original construction. And on that, the difference between those two plans and the plans that are submitted here are you flipped the bedroom in the gym, which is no big deal. And but you also took the closet in what is now the gym. And there's no measurement there, so I can't say exactly, but visually it appears to me that you doubled the space for the closet in the gym.
I I don't, I I I would have to look at that, but the the we we were working with the the new concrete at that point. So I could, I'd be happy to look at that if.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mean to spring it on you, but I did ask staff about it. But I mean, I look at these plans, and it shows it's about half the size that you're showing on this plan here that you gave us for this project. So I think also the other thing is, is that there might be a little bit more square footage that has to be accounted for.
In 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 what area, in in that area?
In the closet. Yeah, I mean, there's no measurement, so I can't tell you what it is. But just visually looking at it, to me, it looks like it's close to fifty percent more space than what was projected.
I could take a look at that for sure.
So I think with those two things, we may have to continue it to get the right square footage and take a look at the easement and run it past the fire. I mean, I'll open it up for public comment.
So you're saying that there's additional floor area on these new plans?
Yeah. So the closet on, sorry, I closed my thing, the closet in A two O in the gym. If you look at it, it does that whole length of that section, and on the D R E and also on the original plans, that closet is cut off like almost in half from what's here. It goes to, you know, it has that thing that goes out, and right as it hits the closet, that's where it ended, but the closet goes all the way down now into that additional space. Sorry, I haven't.
As everything got pulled forward, I think that was, yeah.
So I have no idea how much square footage that is. I mean, it could be fifteen square feet or twenty. I don't know. There's no dimension, so I can't kind of.
Yeah, I I'll definitely look at that.
So any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here in the public that wishes to make a comment? See none. Is there anyone on Zoom, Nancy? No. Oh, thank you. So let's bring it back to the commission for discussion. Kevin, you want to start?
Yeah, I mean, I I think I totally get what you're doing, and I appreciate the changes you've made along the way. And I came ready to to support it, but I'm sorry, I realized that the street question needs to be resolved before I could support it at this point in time. But once we check that and make sure we're clear on that, I think it's good.
Thank you. Commissioner Slaymaker?
Yeah, I actually am in the same ballpark here. I I was actually very positive about the additional parking, because I felt like it was going to be an asset to the owners and also to other neighbors on the street. So I was positive about that and had no issues with the skylight. So I'm kind of at a perplexed about the next step.
Thank you. Commissioner Seidel?
I'm generally in support of this. I'm I'm not concerned about the extra space that resulted from rationalizing the construction. I understand, you know, when you're doing a conceptual plan, especially with a complex, you know, hillside site and offsite offset levels, you know, that the engineering may turn out slightly different. So ultimately, I think that's going to be fine. I was kind of sensitized to the parking situation and the narrowness of the street when I was there. I actually, and I think we're, you know, probably as a group, going to continue this for a little more information regarding that and some review internally in the city. But just to toss out an idea, it it seems like you're you're putting the fence closer to the street than the bulkhead, if I can call it that, or the shoring that was installed for construction, and you might actually be able to take some of that planting back and and move the fence closer to the house and expand that parking area a little bit, which, you know, just functionally, it might be better for the street. So I I don't know the answer to all of that, but I do see a very narrow street in there. So it might be something to think about as this goes through one more review.
Thank you, and I agree with my fellow commissioners that we just need some more information on the easement and just to make sure that we're dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's and and making sure we get everything correct in what is being asked for. So representing the applicant, you have a choice. You can ask us to take a vote. You can ask us to continue it. Great, perfect. Okay, all right, then I may have a motion. May have a motion to continue it to a future date.
Yes, I will make a request for a motion to continue till future date.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to so we're going to take a quick five minute break.
Yeah, I had a great time talking with them. I put down what's what's. Listen.
Oh, yeah.
Who's birthday is it?
Okay, we'll reconvene the planning hearing and go with item number five sixty Madrona Avenue. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Karpia and members of the planning commission for your consideration. Again, this evening is an application for design review exception to total floor area and revocable license to construct a new garage at sixteen Madrona Avenue. The subject property is on a steeply sloped seven thousand two hundred and eighty eight square foot parcel in the R fifteen zoning district. The site is developed with a two story residence as adjacent to other single family homes on all sides. The subject property currently does not contain parking on site. The project proposes a new two hundred and eighty six square foot garage as well as a one hundred ninety five square foot carport at street level and a one hundred and eighty one square foot addition below the garage. Other improvements include a four foot tall recycling enclosure, relocating three bay trees from the front of the property to the eastern side yard and re roofing the existing residence. Access to the garage would be via a new concrete overwood driveway deck. Also, the the applicant has requested a is has an application for an A D U. It's not part of this application here tonight. It will be reviewed ministerially by staff. Viewing the proposed residence from the south elevation, the carport would be twenty three feet above existing grade at the roof's pitch and twenty seven feet above grade at its eastern most end. From Madrona Avenue, the west elevation would show the new garage carport. In addition, the project would install two downlights at the at the new garage door. The applicant previously proposed recessed downlights within the overhangs, but has elected to remove those from the scope of work. Again, highlighted here in orange was the A D U. The project proposes a total of five windows along the new garage with three facing the east elevation and two facing the north and south elevations. Colors and materials would include a new composite shingle roof in a charcoal color, cedar shingle siding in a natural redwood tone, wood trim in a linen white color, and a new driveway and apron in a natural brushed concrete. This is the rendering of the garage and carport. The project requests a revocable license to install a new concrete driveway and apron within the Madrona Avenue right of way as well as an exception to total floor area to allow three thousand one hundred and fifty two square feet or two thousand four hundred and five square feet are permitted. Again, in order to grant the exception, planning commission must make each of the following findings. And as outlined in the draft resolution, staff recommends the findings can be made. The project would be exempt from C Q. And Steph finds the addition to comply with the zoning ordinance and general plan policies and recommends planning commission adopt the resolution for design review. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. Does anyone have questions for staff? Kevin?
And this has nothing to do with the project, so don't get nervous. This is more a process thing. I just think it's interesting. I'd be curious, staff and Chair Karpia, how we should address these going forward. I mean, so a rendering like this, it's kind of interesting. So we're asked to approve this. It's like, how does the carport stay up?
Magic.
But it's sort of, it's it's interesting, and I just think going forward, as we figure out how to get how to optimize the A D U and J D U process, it's like, what comes first? And how do you, I mean, because it's hard to, I mean, technically approve this proposal without knowing how the carport is going to be held up, which of course is going to be held up by the A D U, which we can't see, because it's a different approval. Anyways, it's something we need to figure out at some point, so we have the completeness of information, yet respect the ministerial process. Anyways, just just wanted to make that note.
I I was having the same problem, and it just seems like that I think the best thing was having that yellow to show it. If you can at least know what it's going to be, then you can say, oh, yeah, I get it. And I think if there's some way we can just do that, even though we're not voting on it, so that we know.
Yeah, I mean, because even if you look at the design standards that we're supposed to be, or we do apply, I mean, in terms of mass and bulk and scale and so forth and materials, I mean, it is, even though we can't opine on the A D U, it is relevant or that context is relevant to approving the garage, in this case, in the carport, because how does that either, you know, amplify an issue or mitigate an issue? Again, it's just, it's an interesting thing. It's complicated. It has nothing to do with your application, and my I have no concerns about that. It's just, I think it just revealed a process thing we have to figure out.
I think especially when it's connected to a building. It would be nice just to have the outline and then maybe just, you know, put A D U. We all know we can't talk about it, even though we talk about it. It just so that visually we can see it, because I think if there was great outcry on this project, people would be going, what? And then, you know, so and I get why the story polls weren't there, but I think just having, just as a point of reference, if it's like this, where it's kind of part of, it would be nice just to know how it's all supposed to look, because it's kind of funny, even when we get this one. It took me a minute to figure this one out. That well, why isn't the roof coming over? And why is this back wall there? And then I realized that was part of the garage. And but that the roof was going to be part of the A D U. So it was, you know, it would be nice just to have the outline.
We can have a rendering with the future A D U, and that might solve it. You know, we can talk about this sort of offline, too. Maybe it's, we approve the A D U first and show approved A D U on the plan, right?
Together. Yeah, anyways, I just thought it was interesting, but thank you.
Thank you. That was it?
That's it.
Okay. Any other questions? I had one question that I had asked, and I don't know if I got clarity on it.
About the parking? Yeah, I don't, I still don't know. Maybe John Swain can comment on that. We do need another spot. I think there's room to tandem park a spot, but I couldn't dimension it on the plan.
Okay, we'll ask Mr. Swain.
Thank you.
Is it the reason because they are? Is it the reason because they are not close enough?
Within a half a mile. And can we hear from the applicant? Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm John Swain, applicant. And I also, tonight, I have Andy and Matina, the owners here with me, and Matina's going to speak as well.
Okay.
And also, I feel the same way as you about that rendering, I've never seen anything like it.
It's the parting of the sea.
Okay, so, I want to thank the staff for all the work that they've done. We've been working on this for quite a while for such a, what's started out looking like a simple project, it got very complicated with the location of the elevator and the ramps for the garage and so forth. It was a three-dimensional puzzle. It was kind of interesting. Anyway, so, you've all been to this site and seen what a dangerous place it is to park. So, the goal here was to create some off-street parking. It's also a very poor entrance to the house. It's the only entrance to the house is down a winding stone stairway. So, we wanted to make, improve that, make that better, therefore, the elevator. The house is much lower than the street because of the steep slope. And aside from making things safer, we wanted to, the current roof is very ugly, we wanted to improve the looks of that. So, that's a part of the project. As far as the square footage goes, the owners are open to doing a deed restriction, which I understand will cut down on the, with the deed restriction, the square footage of the ADU will be taken off the square footage of the house.
Well, no, so, what it is, is you get credit for that square footage to be used in another location on the structure.
Right, so.
So, yeah, yeah.
So, anyway, they're open to doing that. And the other, another comment was that the, and I don't know if Sammy pointed this out, but there was an objection to the lights in the overhang. And we, so we're going to change those, we'll use all the same, those same downlights that we've used for the garage at the side. Yeah, the lot, I just want to, I guess, emphasize that the lot is very steep. It's a, it's a difficult lot. And and this was the best way to deal with it. The primary views are not, I don't feel, are impacted at all for the, and certainly the neighbors don't feel that way. The neighbors are supportive. The mass and bulk, we reduced it by by breaking up the front and putting in the carport. And the carport, by the way, is see-through, so that it doesn't impact the view from the street. So, the garage and elevator, it'll provide their parking for two, off-street parking for two cars. It takes away two from the street, but there'll still be some street parking. It'll provide safe parking, as you saw, parking up there is always a challenge. And it'll provide safe access to the residents. That's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have one. Could you, or would the applicant in any way consider having it as a parking, a flat parking without the roof? Just having it as a parking pad instead of having a solid roof overhang? I'm mostly concerned with my co-commissioners here who have a hard time understanding the drawing where the carport roof has no wall to hang on to. I understand how you can see that, but if you take away the roof on the carport, then you open up the view completely.
The roof actually has, you know, the way it's been designed is to have, to be minimal. That whole carport has been designed to be minimal. And I feel like the roof, it's like in the sky and it's really, you know, it's not, you take that away, you're not going to add a lot to the view. And it does add to the convenience, I mean, for parking in the rain and so forth.
Yeah, but you still have to go outside.
No, because you'll be able to, actually, there's a door and a passageway from there through to the garage, to the elevator.
What about the ADU? That we can't talk about?
This will be at the back.
Okay, so that, that is totally separate.
Right.
So, there will be a wall, so no window for the ADU there?
On the sides.
Only on the side, one window.
Yes. And the door, it's the door into the ADU.
Okay.
Slaymaker?
So, in, I was reading the report and everything, and it says, proposed garage and carport would have a height between eight feet eight to thirteen feet five above street level. Is that because we can't tell what the, I mean?
That's because it's thirteen.
So, it says eight.
Thirteen five at the peak of the hip. And it's, it ranges from nine to ten feet at the actual garage door.
So, it was.
I think it's like thirteen feet there.
Right.
And then, over here, it's eight.
Eight, it varies from eight, from nine to ten feet.
And that's about the height of the carport.
Carport.
Yeah, because of Madrona going up, the carport gets a little smaller. The carport is.
Eight point five.
Five eight.
Yeah.
So, that's where the thirteen, yeah.
Thanks, I just.
But it's the peak that.
Okay, thanks.
That dash line is the street. Anything else? And I guess, Matina would like to.
Oh, yes, please.
Hi, I'm Matina Sarah Metis and my husband Andy Panetta. So, we've pretty much enjoyed living in our house for almost twenty-five years now. And we're hoping to retire here. However, as you have seen, when you went to the house, it's, the parking is a struggle. It's dangerous and it's, the older I get, the more nervous I get, actually, parking on that cliff. And access to our home is burdensome. And so, so we've always wanted to add a garage and now we're just in a financial position to do it and want to go forward. And then we also wanted to add the elevator, so as we do retire, we will have access to our house as we go into our golden years. Parking is always a challenge on Madrona. And so, I do believe by actually adding, taking two cars off the space, it will help the curb, it'll help safety reasons for fire trucks to get through. So, I think from that perspective, it'll help the neighborhood. And I think we've done it, we've tried to take into account what the city had said about the garage. Initially, we had two garages and we've kind of compromised for the carport to help with the walking view and the view. But I do think we do kind of want a roof, just because of all the leaves and the trees and the rain and the weather, we definitely would prefer to have a cover on our carport. Any questions?
No, thank you very much, appreciate it. I'll open it up to the public, is there anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing no one, Nancy, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Seidel?
I did visit the site and I can appreciate the access and logistics issues you're talking about. I think this is a reasonable proposal, I think it'll improve the parking. I'm okay with a roof over the carport. I think, you know, there'll still be a view through, but I think from a practical standpoint, it's nice to have cover over the car, so I don't have any concerns, I can make the findings in favor of this application.
Thank you. Commissioner Slaymaker?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Seidel. I appreciate the plan and I think, you know, with the garage and carport at the street, such a very narrow street, it will, it'll really improve parking and be a much safer space. I also am happy about the new roof. I think it's going to make it really more current with the new garage. I'm happy that they're going to relocate the three bay trees, so I can also make the findings, granting design review exception to total floor area and approval of the update on the existing revocable license.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
I can, I can make the findings. I thought maybe if we're going to look at the exception to floor area, that at least hundred and twenty-six square feet were going to be withdrawn from the application if the garage or the parking pad did not have a roof. But I don't see that as being something I am strongly opposed to. So, yes, I can make findings for the three motions that are in front of us.
Thank you. Commissioner Berg?
Yeah, thank you, I love that you've been here for twenty-five years and you want to retire here and you're going to make your home good for, as you said, the golden years. I can make all of the findings because apparently the house has some magical quality that allows it to have a roof with no support, so, good on you.
And I just, okay, so let me make my comments and I'll have my question. So, thank you very much for this project. I think that you've approached what you try to do very respectfully to the neighborhood. I feel that as a person who has a carport with a roof over it, that my car is always parked in the covered spot and my husband gets the uncovered spot. So, I think it's important to have a covered spot because it actually does kind of protect the car from the elements and makes it last longer, anyway, on a side note. But I can also, and I also wanted to thank you for choosing to deed restrict your ADU. We appreciate that. And also to remind everyone that that square footage and that ADU is going to.
This project is for the magical qualities in front of you for the addition, not the ADU. So, you have to be able to make the eighty, the exception to total floor area findings for this project.
Okay, all right. So, I can make the findings for the total floor area and the the revocable license and for the design review. So, with that, can I have a motion, have the three motions?
Okay, let me get some practice in here. I'll try making the motions for the first time.
I will second. Don't be shy.
Let me know if I don't do this right.
Okay, I have my hammer.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution granting design review for the property located at sixty Madrona Avenue.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adopt the resolution granting exception to total floor area to allow a total floor area of three thousand ninety-four square feet where twenty-four hundred and five square feet is permitted and twenty-four hundred and ninety square feet exists at sixty Madrona Avenue.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Recommend city council approve to update an existing revocable license for new private improvements located in the public right-of-way at sixty Madrona Avenue.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. So, with that, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Yay. That'll be under the ADU.